What's his name?
Yeah.
The sheriff.
Let's see, where is...
Yeah, what's his name?
I guess Chrissy's gonna be here.
Chrissy's the sheriff.
Yes, she is, she's right there.
Where's she at? Where are you sitting?
I'm here.
She wants her spot.
Yes, I should.
I can't. I signed it.
You did?
Yep, nope, nope.
You did?
No.
Okay, good evening, everybody.
Hello, Mark.
Hello, Mark.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Board of Trustees for the Village of Cambridge, our meeting of March 22nd to order. Roll call, please.
Trustee Rose.
Here.
Franklin.
Here.
Whitworth.
Here.
Geller.
Sheriff.
Cumbier.
Here.
Schaefer-Weiss.
Here.
McNally.
Here. Let's see, why don't we start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Lisa, has this meeting been properly posted?
It was posted in the upper and lower levels of the Amundsen Community Center, Hometown Bank, Cambridge Post Office, and the Village website.
All right, okay, let's move on to, we've got a fair number of items here to cover, so let's start with public appearances. Now, we have the agenda, you know what we're gonna be talking about later, but does anybody care to step forward and have a couple of things? Jay?
Hi, Jay Weiss, I have a vote, Dorset's pretty close to the high school.
Okay, have a seat, introduce yourself and...
I noticed in the packet that we'll be voting on an ordinance change that allows ATVs and vehicles to be operated on public streets, or no?
No, not on an ordinance change, just a discussion.
Oh, it's a discussion, so we're starting this process.
If we want to pursue something.
Okay, good. I went to read the material, but I couldn't, it seemed to be it was obscured, maybe from the scan.
Yeah.
So, I just wanted to be sure if there was a vote tonight, that we all understood what was going to happen, and I didn't, and as a resident, I just wanna say I'd like to think about this, because it would seemingly potentially change the nature of our village, and we live very close to the high school, and there are two battalions, one at 7:45 in the morning, and a second one at 3:15 in the afternoon, and these are kids having a lot of fun with a lot of vehicles, and I would just wanna be sure we've really thought this through before we proceeded on making any potential changes.
Okay.
That's everything.
Thank you. Other comments, public appearances, this is your time to speak.
Can we have volume, please, I'm sorry?
Volume, thank you, we'll work on that. If you can identify yourself, please, in your...
My name is Rebecca Borkart, I live at 209 River Street. I have a major concern, and I know you guys can't talk to me about it, we should definitely have a meeting. In 2017, our tax asset base was $1,338,92. In 2018, it was $1,345,132. In 2019, our tax base dropped to $742,982. How does that happen? I've called the Department of Revenue, and I've called the Attorney General's office, that is $500,000 missing. I'm not impressed. I hope you guys can figure out where that went, because if you can't, the Attorney General's going to.
Other, other public appearances, comments?
Tim Phelps, 716 Ken Sethway, it has to do with the path around our, around our subdivision. Evidently, some trees had broke off again after they were cleared out, and they pose now a safety hazard, so I just thought maybe we could get out there, have somebody get out there and get that squared away, so the people in the area can watch their pets and stuff without having to go around a big tree lane across the path.
This is the second round, sorry, is this the second round of trees?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, 'cause it was done, and it was cleared, and then we went on just a few days ago, and it's like the north, northwest corner, just off of 134, maybe about 100 yards, it's laying right there past the curb. Okay? Thanks.
Okay. If you would have gave me a call, I'd be right in the elevator. I will be right there, I work for Public Works. Oh, you guys called me, you had to walk 131, man?
Oh, it's been a place.
Yeah, okay, we'll connect with you a little bit later, thanks, Ty.
All right, thanks.
Okay, Tim. All right, anybody else have a comment of public appearance, or I close that portion? Okay, all right, we're gonna move on. Approval of the consent agenda. Are you gonna make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this consent agenda.
All right, second?
I'll second.
All right, which includes minutes from last meeting, licensing committee, personnel committee, water and sewer plan, permission. Are there any concerns, any questions? Okay, all those in favor of approval of the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries. All right, I'm gonna go on with the President's report, and for that, I want to, I wanna thank the trustee, that is to my immediate right, it would be your left, Carla Geller. Carla is, has served here, and she has done a wonderful job, and you are leaving our community. So, with that, we wish you nothing but the best with your new home, and thank you for the service that you've provided to Cambridge residents.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Oh, my gosh. Gosh, well, I thank everybody on the board especially, it has been an education, for sure, and I mean that in the best way, so I'm kinda overwhelmed, thank you so much, that's very, it's been a pleasure to serve, and I know there's an election coming up, so I wish the best to whoever's in this seat next.
All right, thank you, again, best wishes in the years to come, and come back and visit us anytime.
Well, yes, thank you.
Okay, library board, what do we have?
Okay, yes. The board went through the annual report from Joan Bame. Mary Giarmo and Bob Saloff presented the, they had a historical presentation project that they have worked on for quite some time. It chronicles the building of the library from its inception, fundraising, all the way through the building of it, and it constituted many finders, and this is going to be archived and kept at the library, if anybody is interested, curious to, to see it. We also spent quite a bit of time on the recruitment and hiring process that we're going to be doing. Joan, as you know, is retiring next February, and so it's gonna be quite a recruitment and hiring process. We're also going to develop a separate hiring committee that's going to be also working in conjunction with the library board on hiring a new head librarian.
Any questions for Chris? All righty, village office updates, Lisa.
A lot of ongoing things that are on the agenda. The revised tax bills did go out to everyone with all the checks, and a note for those that aren't getting the checks, that it will be deduction on their second installment. Election is in full swing, all the notices going out, absentee ballots, about 125 absentee ballots have been sent out already, early voting does start now in the office, so people can begin voting in the office. Training in the public test will be occurring next week, so a lot of election stuff, I was going for part of last week and yesterday, so thank you staff for covering, and those were the two big things.
Are we, how are we doing with the checks? Are those, are they going out?
They went out.
Yep, I saw that.
Yeah.
And any calls, any, anybody asking what this was for?
Yeah, some calls with some...
Just regarding the coverage in the letter, it was very clear.
Yeah, but you followed the county on this, right?
I did.
Okay, all right. Any trustees, any issues on the refund checks that we had? Okay, glad we took care of that, and we're getting money back instead of asking it more. Okay, all right. Thank you, Lisa, pardon? Okay, bills?
The first round of bills was $30,734.16. The second round, $42,362.92. The grand total was $73,097.8.
Okay, can you repeat the total again?
The total is $73,097.8.
Okay.
And I don't know if you wanna do it separately, but the total of the tax overpayments that went out was $36,265.13.
These are almost two different issues, what do you think, Lisa, Jane?
Yeah, those have gone out already, they're more FYI.
Yeah, so do we need to include those in with the $73,000?
No, no, that's fine.
Okay.
We'll just make note in the minutes that that was the amount.
Okay. All right, anybody care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to pay the bill, settle them off.
$73,000.
Second?
Okay, discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Franklin.
Yes.
Whitworth.
Yes.
Geller.
Yes.
Cumbier.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
McNally.
Yes. All right, take care of those obligations. Okay, let's move on to unfinished business. First up, discussion and possible action regarding the TIF feasibility study, and Brian Reimer from Ellers is here. Brian, if you can come up, introduce yourself.
Hello, everyone, Brian Reimer with Ellers, nice to be in front of you again. Do you all have the, our packet, within your packet?
Okay.
So, we provide this feasibility report as a way to understand what the potential tax increment district would look like, and how the numbers work out for that. So, basically, I'll just give a 30-second kind of TIF one-on-one, and that is, based on the development that can happen in the parcels in which you create the TID, any of the increment or additional value that is generated within those parcels, those tax dollars, instead of going to the overlapping taxing jurisdictions, go to the village in order to aid that development to happen. So, with that said, we look at this in kind of three phases, in terms to get to the completion of the creation of a TID, the first phase being what I'm here presenting to you tonight, which is the feasibility, it's basically us as your municipal advisor saying, hey, this does work money-wise, certainly there's other components, of course, to every decision, but the feasibility report is meant to just kind of identify how the, how the money works, and what the TID closure might look like in terms of the total life of the TID. So, with that said, turn, you can turn to kind of the first table that we have, which is on page three, and statutorily, you're, you cannot create a TID if the increment of your existing TIDs is 12% of your total equalized value, which right now you have the capacity of about 24 million, so that base value of the two parcels we're looking to include in this district is quite small, so we definitely have the ability to, you know, create this. We, you know, with the 24 million, you'd certainly have the flexibility beyond this to either amend, to add, you know, territory to an existing TID, or create another TID, so it's always kind of to just understand, do a little self-check at the time that you created, one, to make sure that you can create it, and then two, of course, to see, what does this mean for us into the future, so just kind of understand that you certainly still have flexibility with creating it, you're not up against your limit, given that you have about 24 million to work with here, and we're only doing a two-parcel TID. On the next table, which is page five, we're looking at the development assumptions for these two lots, so we have about 19.2 million of estimated assessed value, and this, the developer is willing to have this as part of their guarantee in terms of the value when you memorialize the transaction, that I'll kind of walk through on the next couple of tables. Part of that, our recommendation, of course, is always to say, we want these guaranteed dollars, and in order to keep your performance up, to get your dollars back to you, that you guarantee this value, so these are the values that were provided by the developer that they're willing to guarantee at the 19.2 million, and you can see this development kind of over time, so they're willing to make this performance as depicted here on table two. Are there any questions with kind of the development assumptions? This would be the growth you see as these buildings are constructed, and then the point at which they get assessed will show what the revenue dollars look like as a result of 19.2 million of assessed value. Seeing none, we'll kind of move on to the next page, which on table three depicts what that 19.2 million of assessed value adds in terms of the increment dollars, so understand here, again, the base that is created, those tax dollars still go to the county and the other overlapping taxing jurisdictions, kind of as status quo before the TID was created, so all, all you're kind of asking for is during the life of the TID, we use these dollars to make sure this development happens within the district, no matter what the district is, if there's infrastructure needs, and we'll kind of walk through those projects, but this is how the dollars are generated, so you have a building constructed, for example, this year, 2022, so we show about 6.4 million of assessed value in 2022, that's your construction year, that'll be assessed 1123, and that turns into what is increment value, and then in 2024, when those tax bills are paid, that is the increment dollar, so you'll see in the orange column, or dark highlighted column, if you don't have it in color, those are the tax dollars created, so the first year being about 127,000, and then increasing as more assessed value is, is generated. The only other items I'll note from this table is we're relatively conservative in showing a 1% appreciation factor every year. Over the past five years, you've averaged over that, and quite frankly, about double that at, at three, so we feel that's a conservative item, as well as we've left the tax rate flat, so as your tax rate would change, that would certainly change the amount of dollars coming in as well, but we always develop these with a level of conservatism, keeping that appreciation factor light, as well as a flat tax rate is generally the approach. So, just kind of understand, we've, we're trying to be conservative with these, and the total dollars generated from 19.2 million of assessed value is 7.6 million, so that would be over the total life, now we'll kind of get to, is that truly needed? Do we need all 20 years here? So, the next page dives into what are the, what are the eligible TID project costs that we would be spending these dollars on in order for this development to happen? So, under state statute, you're only allowed certain eligible expenses to spend the increment dollars on, so we obviously review those, and at the time at which we decide to create a project plan, your legal counsel will review this and sign off on this, so this is no different than the previous TIDs that you've created, most recently, TID five, but with that said, the only projects that we're looking to complete here are two of them, one, the development incentives, and we'll kind of walk through how that works, but that is basically the $1.1 million that the developer needs in return over time just to complete the project, so they have certain infrastructure costs that are going in, and those are kind of identified in note two below, in the metered intersection, sidewalk, utilities, you know, there's certain things in order for these buildings to be constructed and operational that are needed for them, they're willing to pay for that upfront, and then you reimburse them over time as they've, as they're generating this value, and so we'll, we'll follow the numbers on the next table. The other item is working with staff and the village engineer, identifying are there any opportunities for other TID eligible expenses that are allocable to these two parcels, so you did have upcoming well treatment projects that the engineer deemed a certain portion of it would be eligible to these two parcels in the amount of about $400,000, so they, the engineer, you know, identified, hey, we can put these in the project plan, so at the point at which you decide to move forward with these well projects, if you'd like to allocate tax increment dollars to it, you can, so those, it's a great way to kind of, instead of using water rates to pay for those, or tax dollars to pay for those, using these tax increment dollars from the revenue generated, basically, you know, having those other taxing authorities, those dollars for the time that the TID is open, paying for these projects, so it's a way to kind of keep those tax rates low, and not have the water rates also raised in order to pay for this project, so kind of good news there that there, you know, there was an identification of additional projects that these dollars could go to. And then, two pages from that, on page, the page number's disappeared, page nine, which should be labeled page nine, I apologize for that, but it's the page with the bigger table on it, and that is table five, so this is the, the picture, if you were to look at the TID just by numbers, and so, starting left to right, we look at the revenues generated, so those are those tax dollars that we just kind of went through, the 7.6 million, and then, as you're moving to the right, the kind of secondary three columns, and then the tertiary three columns, looking at the additional, you know, how those repayments are made, so the first one being that 1.1 million, so what the developer is proposing is basically, hey, to pay for all these infrastructure costs, we would ask to be repaid from these increments that we generate over time, so that's, you know, paid from the first time that they create those tax dollar, tax increment dollars in 2024 through 2029, so we've just developed kind of a repayment schedule there, and then the secondary part is that well project, so the 400,000, that is only the TID eligible portion, so understand there would be a non-TID eligible portion, so that's why we kind of say, all right, you could use general obligation bonds, you could use revenue bonds, we'll kind of decide at that point what the market is dictating, what is the best approach, and based on the other needs of the village, certainly if you don't have the general obligation debt capacity, or we have, you know, see other things, we can decide a different financing mechanism, the important part to see here is that we can pay this off relatively quickly, you know, these treatment upgrades generally have, you know, 20 to a greater than 20-year life, to be able to pay this off, you know, within six years, you know, shows a pretty high-performing TID, just financially, so you're, you're able to satisfy that municipal revenue obligation, which is that agreement with the developer, and also pay for these well treatment expenses, and then close the TID by 2030. I would say that's a pretty quick and well-performing TID, again, you know, typically, we do see these go to almost full maturity, I think the average life is about 12 to 15 years, in that range, it, it's all dependent, I would say, the TIDs that are created for isolated purposes like this one, we have two lots, we have a specific development that the developer is guaranteeing the value, and you'll be memorializing that in what's called a developer's agreement, that these do perform really well, and that these will close in, in this short amount of time, so that said, again, kind of good results, more or less, numbers-wise, makes a lot of sense in terms of getting this district closed, the other taxing jurisdictions will, of course, you know, see this as a benefit, as, you know, then those dollars will be available to them at the point at which this, this closes with the new values put on them, so the other two items that I'll add is just, appendix A is the map, if you're curious as to where the two parcels are, and then appendix B is the timeline, and just a little bit on that timeline is, we show kind of the latest approach, you know, the, the developer is looking to create that value, construction year 2022, which is the year we're in, in order to realize that increase in value, you need to create the district by September 30th, so we've kind of gone back by the latest village board meeting, and that's what you see in the timeline, certainly at the point at which you guys are ready to move forward with the developer's agreement, we kind of recommend having that aligned with the TID creation date, so I would say this timeline is overly conservative, and what I mean by that is, it'll probably be faster than that, should you choose to move forward, just based on kind of where the developer's plans, as I understand it, to start to move dirt and have those, you know, construction costs incurred, they're, of course, you know, it's in their best interest to have that developer's agreement in place for their own financing on their end, so just understand that that timeline, probably overly conservative, I just wanted to point that out, that we do wanna get this done, if you wanna move forward by that September 30th cutoff date, but certainly probably is gonna move faster than that. So, with that, I'll kind of be quiet and see if there's any questions that you may have, hopefully, that was a better explanation, provided some further context for you.
Brian, on the graph on page nine in the notes, says, additional projects can be added, but feasibility should depend on the village's ability to finance, can you expand on that a little bit?
Sure, sure, so it's kind of talking about, understanding that we're at the feasibility point in this, if the village wishes or finds other projects that they wish to complete within the, you know, the TID's life, the project plan would need to be amended if this was the only projects that were scoped, the state statute asks that you identify, you have to do an amendment if you're adding projects, the cost can change, you know, within reason, generally, I think it's been about 15 to 25% in terms of those costs, and statutorily, there's actually no hard and fast rule on that, so the cost can change, and, and the project plan identifies that these are estimates, but you can add projects, the issue there is you have to do it through amendments, so that's why we usually say, go all in, only because it doesn't commit you to doing the projects, it doesn't commit you to the financing, rather, it just precludes you from not having to do the amendment, should you decide to move forward with the project, but feasibility-wise, you wanna make sure that the tax increment dollars can pay for it, so you're not grabbing from other sources, you know, but what we tend to call it is kind of, you don't wanna do the field of dreams approach, you kind of want that locked-in development to be able to pay for the projects.
Okay, so if they wanted to do another project, we'd go through this process again?
Right, right, so the amendment process is similar to the creation process, you have to go through the same meetings, so I can kind of walk through that timeline on the creation side, if you guys would like to, basically, next steps after this meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Brian, you work for the village, correct?
Correct.
All right, are you satisfied, when I look at this table, it's on page five?
Yep.
And it has the years, 2022 through 2026, and with lot one, sale of that is $3,200,002, and then lot two, you know, you can see what that is, for a total of $19,200,000.
Mm-hmm.
Are you satisfied that that's, there, there is a good likelihood that they will be able to develop this, sell these properties?
Right, so generally, what we recommend within the developer's agreement, and again, your legal counsel's gonna be a part of the formulation of that, but you generally ask for some sort of performance measure and performance consequence, so you're saying, hey, can you guarantee what you've said you're going to do within these allotted years, you know, so basically, we're gonna do 6.4, and then 3.2, all the way to 2026, so by year-end 2026, we're guaranteeing 19.2 million. In order to get your dollars, Mr. and Mrs. Developer, you have to perform at that level, should you not perform at that level, we're not giving you that amount of increment. Should you not perform at that level, we're not giving you that amount of increment. So basically you're saying you have some sort of performance measure and performance consequence should that not be met. So you memorialize that within the developer's agreement. It's required to have a developer's agreement if you're giving tax incentives like this. So by no means would I say that, that puts the village at a point with an appropriate developer's agreement in a risk situation. So where basically you have to perform, otherwise you don't get what you've asked for.
Other questions?
1.1 million for infrastructure, correct? Do you feel that number is conservative?
So that would probably be more of the engineer to kind of realize what the total dollars are in on that. Also understand too, you can have that kind of drawn up in the developer's agreement to identify, hey, you got to show us what you're paying for in terms of the project. So I believe, you know, the village has been in talks with the DOT already about what the metered intersection or roundabout, you know, like, so it, it seems like the project's been scoped out and that's the biggest chunk of this at around $800,000. But certainly you want your engineer involved. You, you want that kind of memorialized in the developer's agreement as well. So to the conservative measure, I, I wouldn't really be able to opine on that. I would say I'd rather rely on, you know, an engineer to kind of say how much that's going to cost, or the DOT to say how much that's going to cost. But certainly, you know, you can look to legal counsel to talk about how do you walk through that in the developer's agreement, let's say if costs come in 200,000 less.
Or significantly more.
Right, correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Is there anything further here this evening?
I think if you do want to go through the next steps, what we'd be approving tonight and what that would be leading to the next step.
Surely. So I think the next steps is just how, how we, you know, operate in terms of our, you know, this project with the village and what our scope of services is, is basically the feasibility part of this is done unless you had something else to add to it. But we've, we've already kind of walked through all of those items, like an additional project, et cetera. So it's, it's kind of green lighting phase two, which is the actual TID creation. And if you follow on the timeline, there's kind of a few meetings and milestones there. One being developing the project plan, which we kind of handle at the point at which you tell us, let's go forward with the creation process. The second being we organize the joint review board, which is those other taxing jurisdictions so that they can approve this. The other being a plan commission meeting of the village's plan commission, in which you hold a public hearing during that plan commission meeting, and you're deciding to kind of then move it forward to the village board. And then the village board being kind of the final approval step to create the district. And then the JRB kind of gets a last look at it again. Beyond that, there's kind of in the background, the whole developer's agreement and making sure that that's ironed out with legal counsel and us kind of providing these final financial numbers that'll be in the project plan, as you want those two documents to be pretty well-married. So with that said, really the action tonight or direction would be kind of only, do you want to move forward in that creation process? And by no means does that create the TID. We're just kind of moving forward to the next step of it. So you'd get kind of two more, two more milestones or meetings of visibility in the plan commission and public hearing during that plan commission meeting, and then the village board meeting. And then certainly we always welcome anybody to attend the joint review board meeting too, as that's an open public meeting, so.
Anybody feel like they want to move ahead here with the TID creation? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion to move forward with the TID creation phase.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion?
For the next phase, is the developer paying for all of this, the TID creation for your services?
That's a good question, and I, I should have identified that. It is identified in the total cost as part of that 1.1 million is they've offered this in a way that it's of no risk, being that they'll pay for all of the TID creation costs and the administration costs up till their MRO. So what that basically means is you're not asking the general fund to kind of front the money up until you, because usually that's how TIDs end up kind of mechanically happening is since you have that two-year lag of tax increment revenues coming in, you kind of have these creation planning costs, et cetera, you know, our costs, engineer, and then the legal costs. The developer is part of that 1.1 has included that. So they're willing to pay for that upfront and basically at the point at which the developer's agreement is established. So those planning costs, although you may incur the costs before the TID's creation, can then be reimbursed at the point at which the TID is created, so.
Yeah, good.
That does not alter your duty of loyalty?
No.
Okay.
Nope.
So you are still?
Our contract is with the village.
The village, even though it might, mechanics.
Right, dollars are going to you first.
Okay.
And our invoice goes to you.
All right. Just want to be clear on that.
We have never worked for a developer ever, nor planned to, so we work for municipalities only.
All right, other questions? All right, we'll call the matter of vote. All those in favor of moving ahead here with this TID creation, taking the next step, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Gary's. All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Hey.
A little bit.
Am I okay? Your mic is better against your sweater. Oh. Is it even on? It's even worse. It's down.
It's up.
Yeah, 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 okay. Well, just stick it here. Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. We had a little issue.
Tic tacs?
Pretty much.
All right now, Gary? Okay. Going to move on here. Discussion on possible action regarding Lagoon Drive and an update. Jody Young?
I handed out a memo from Joe. As you know, we did give him the go-ahead to submit information to the DOT for the Highway 134 and Lagoon Street project. The initial response has been positive on that. They are looking for some additional information, anticipated traffic from the known developments and so forth. And an initial review memo. Once that is submitted, they will either confirm that it is acceptable, or if they need additional information such as a traffic impact analysis. So they are just looking to move forward with the next steps with the DOT now. But to date, the response has been favorable from the DOT.
Okay.
Okay.
So what he's doing is he's proposing to, to move ahead here with this initial review memo?
Yep, the next step.
And that's going to cost between 3,000 to 5,000?
Yep.
Okay.
Lisa, is this money from the TID that was created out there? Would that eventually be paid out through the TID?
Yes, yeah.
Any other questions? Looking for a motion, if anybody feels inclined.
I'll make a motion to move forward with the cost for the initial review memo. Is that correct?
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion?
Do we need to specify the dollar amount?
Yeah, up to 5,000.
All right. Anything else? Roll call, please.
Trustee Whitmore.
Yes.
Geller.
Yes.
Hubier.
Yes.
Jay Weiss, yes. Rose.
Yes.
Franklin.
Yes.
Nick Naylor.
Yes. Okay. Move ahead here with Joe. Next item up, fire commission updates. I've got a couple of items here for you. They're, they are finished with their presentations. There was a request for one more. It was, and I, when I looked at it, I don't know if it's going to happen, but there were five of those, and I think they were well-received. People came in and got a lot of information from the various, you know, presenters. And I know we had one here, and then we had one out at a bar outside of town here. And then we had one in downtown.
Millie's had one.
Millie's had one, and then there was one across the street I walked in on. Well, I wasn't supposed to be here. I was, I had a funeral to go to, so I, I went in. And so that is that. So those are finished.
Yep.
Okay. And the other thing is, over the weekend, there was a fatality, an assistant fire chief. I don't know if you're aware of this gentleman, Randy North, passed on. As near as I've been told, he was working on a farm, he was operating a bobcat. He had, he had a heart attack. And he didn't check out, and he didn't check in, and they came and they looked for him the next day, and he'd been outside. And they rushed him to the hospital. He was still alive, but he passed on because they had to take him. He went to Fort Atkinson, and then they brought him to, to Madison. And Randy was very well-respected with the fire department, so.
Thirty-seven years with the fire department.
Yeah, he, he was 53 or something like that. I mean, no children, and, and he hadn't been married, but he's been a member of the community. So I'm just going to ask that we just give a moment of silence for Randy. Thank you. All right, I'm going to move on to new business and discussion and possible action regarding the volunteer tree planting event. I thought I saw Jay Weiss. Jay, if you want to come forward. There he is. This seems to be a project that's got your name on it.
It does.
Okay. What can you tell us about this? Because I know we, we're going to.
Well, we have a lot of trees to get in the ground this year, and I was wondering how that might work. And in talking with some people, we determined that it might be a good approach to involve some volunteers to help out our public work staff and do a community planting event where we could learn about trees, where we could plant them, engage with homeowners, and make it a community event. And in talking with Adam Alves, who is a forester for Dane County, he's in connection or in contact with many arborists and our foresters in our area, and has put together a group of about 15 people who could come and help complete this process. So they would be coming in from communities throughout Dane County. He also is an instructor at Madison College and would invite his class of urban forestry students to participate in this event also. So in total, it could be up to about 30 people, which would make short order of getting in 90 or so trees in the ground over the course of a morning, he thinks they could complete it.
It's, it's also on the agenda at KT, so it's possible that some of the middle school and high school students will be available for that as well.
Yes, and I have talked with Margie about this, so she's well-aware of the opportunity to involve kids in the service project as well.
All right. And these locations, you know, we've, we're okay with that? We're not going to be raising anybody's ire with this?
Well, so there would be two components. One would be a, a street tree planting component that would be in the vineyards. And then a secondary component of that would be the recreational trail that goes through the vineyards. There's one other piece to this, which actually involves donating material to be planted on private property in the village, where we've had a lot of trees go missing largely because of the ash borer. So I have been in touch with condo associations, and one of them is very interested in having some trees planted. These would be donated by the tree project, and then we would have volunteers plant them on private property also.
Is this beyond the 90?
It is beyond the 90.
Oh, wow.
It would be another 20 trees. I've also spoken with a number of residents throughout the village who are interested in receiving trees. One of the angles on this is that they're trying to get trees out to people who may not be able to physically go out and purchase a tree, lug it into their car, drive it home, dig a hole, and plant it, which is one of the reasons we went to the condo associations. In some cases, they're elderly populations who could benefit from something like this.
All right. Do we need approval on this one then, Lisa?
We also did hear back from Jane about liability and.
Well, we've got the forms, yeah.
Yeah.
I don't know if that comes in the second part.
The two issues kind of meld, maybe it's, maybe this is a good time.
Sorry.
No, 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 both of, both of them involved questions about liability, because there had been some questions last time. So this is actually a, a great time to, to talk about it. Yeah, I did look, so volunteers are treated in the statute very similar to paid employees in that they get qualified immunity, just like any, any municipality would. But an important piece of that is that they're acting in the scope of what they're employed by the municipality to do, even if employed means for free. And so it's just important, an important component of that is that we have some sort of agreement setting up the scope of what, what is the village asking them to do. And so that immunity exists as long as they're acting, you know, within that scope, they don't get outside of their lane. And so that's a good practice, and, and it sounds like we've got an agreement here that works, that will work well if we just add the village to those entities that are already listed on the agreement language that exists that sets out, here's the scope of, the scope of what we're going to be doing, and, and the village is among the protected entities. So I think we've got a good path forward on that.
Okay.
You know, I didn't realize the private component of that.
I was just.
So I, I didn't have that on my radar when I looked at that agreement. So we, we will want to just check and make sure that any work on the private side of it. I, I'm not sure that we'd want to do that. I mean, I guess that's something for the village to consider. It's one thing for the village to go and, you know, act in the right of way and plant trees where, where the village has authority and clear, clear authority to be. It, it's, it's, it's another step maybe for the village to say, oh yeah, we want to send volunteers onto private property. And maybe if, if, if we do take that step, we'll want to tweak that agreement, or I, I want to look at, look at it with that in mind anyway.
Good.
All right. Well, do we want to move ahead here with your, the plan here for April 9? Any care to make a motion here to engage, I guess it's Dane County, to come out here and to work under your supervision to have these 90 trees planted?
I'll, I'll make a motion to move forward with the volunteer tree planting event.
Second.
Okay.
Does that include the forms, or you just?
Just the first one, the event.
Yeah, move it to the form. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, we got that part down. Now let's get into the volunteer forms, which is this, this document, right?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the volunteer forms for the event on April 9.
I'll second.
Okay. All those in favor, approval of the form for April 9? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Gary's. All right, looks like you're off and going, and you'll have a bunch of volunteers and a whole bunch of trees. Jay, village forester. Jay, village forester, maybe you can help me, because I was talking with Derek, wasn't you, Todd? And apparently the silver maple that's on the corner of Westside Park has to come down. And I know this is not part of the agenda, but can you just please, as long as you're here, can you tell us about that?
Sure, sure.
Is it dead or something? I don't know.
So silver maples don't live that long. They grow very quickly, and they start to fall apart. And this tree is probably seventy to a hundred years old. It is, has numerous cankers and cavities where bacteria has eaten into the actual structural component of the tree, so it's at risk for breaking in a storm. And it's very close, obviously, to the playground and where a lot of people are in the park. Yeah, so it's time to take it down. We've been monitoring it for about ten years now, and it's decayed to the point where it needs to be removed.
How can you tell that there is canker and rotting out? I mean, you have a quiz that you can.
Visual inspection usually. You know, you can look up and see that branches have been either cut off and they've decayed, or they've broken off, and the decay is working its way down into the branches and into the trunk of the tree. So there are numerous cases where there are, there are structural issues with the tree, so.
That particular tree, we had a bunch of branches come down recently, big ones. So it needs to come down.
I know public works moving about it, and I was like, geez, that's a pretty tree, but I couldn't tell, because I was looking at it from the other side of the park, so.
Yeah, if you stop and start looking at it more closely, it's pretty obvious that it's.
Look at it on a sunny day, visually look at it, and then you'll understand.
Okay.
And Jay, what are the rules about planting silver maples in the village?
Well, we've talked a lot about that, and we don't allow them, so everything's fine.
All right. All right, Jay, you're doing a wonderful job. Keep it up. Thank you very much for what you're doing. We love Tree City USA. I think that's a wonderful thing there. Okay. All right. Let's move on here. Discussion on possible action regarding the bike path easements. And I think this is probably you, Jane.
Yes, President McNally asked me to give up, an update. You'll remember a couple months ago, you authorized me to approach Dancing Goat and the winery to just basically trade out the old bike path easement that we're not using for the new easement that we want to complete the bike path on. We did have a chance to discuss this with Dancing Goat and with the winery. Both parties would like some CS certified survey map work done as a condition of making that happen. I think there's some logistical things that we'd have to work through with that, but, you know, manageable. The Dancing Goat has said they won't agree to any kind of trading of the easements as an independent real estate transaction unless we would also add in some things related to our water maintenance plan. And so I wrote a memo to the board just to give my opinion on that. My recommendation would be to maintain the bike path as something separate from some things that are, anything that's unrelated to the bike path. I think, I think my recommendation, my recommended approach all along has been to keep this as a separate real estate transaction and not to have the village yield its authority on other matters as a condition of it. But, I mean, it's certainly your policy call if you, if you would like to engage in that. And if that were the case, I could tell you, you know, more specifics about what they were looking for. But the overview is that they'd like a detailed log of everything that happens by the village personnel staff regarding water maintenance. My reaction to that, to you, is that, you know, the DNR has quite a bit of standards for the village to follow. The village has, is definitely working to make improvements on its water maintenance plan. And I think if we continue down that path, I think we're making progress there. And I don't necessarily recommend that we, that we yield control on that related to the bike path easement. That does put us in a situation, I mean, one thing I want to make sure everyone understands is that there is a statutory prohibition on us condemning land for the bike path. So we've kind of got to get to an agreement at some point. But I think it's, as we're working toward the water maintenance plan improvements, we might be in a situation sooner rather than later where we have more bargaining power and that we've established relationships on that, on that issue.
Can you clarify what the cart before the horse issue is in your memo here?
Oh, yeah. So the other piece of this that I haven't talked about as much to you tonight is the certified survey maps. This is, this is something that both the winery and the Dancing Goat were asking for as part of an agreement. They would like to see a finalized certified survey map as a condition of agreeing to trade the easements. Our reaction to that has been that we kind of need, we need the easements in place. We need this finalized easement in place before we can complete the bike path in order to have the certified survey map reflect the final bike path. And so it hasn't really made sense to us to agree to whatever role we would perform in a final certified survey map before we can actually complete the bike path. But we can agree to other measures, you know, there, I think the Dancing Goat and the winery would say there are certain administrative tasks that the village could agree to do that would be in our lane as far as completing a certified survey map, and we could agree to do those things. We just couldn't agree to have a finalized certified survey map as a condition of creating the easement, because, because we need the easement first to complete the bike path.
But isn't it the responsibility of the winery to do the certified survey map first? And then we can add the trail to it after the fact.
That's the other.
And I haven't seen an updated certified survey map from the winery yet.
And they have shared, there was a certified survey map that they had done in 2018 that they shared.
It needs to be updated, because a lot of things didn't take place that should have, or shouldn't have, or whatever.
This is another example of where I think we should use the ordinances and state law to set out what the roles are of each, of each of the parties. And, you know, it would never be the village's duty to be the one to file a certified survey map, for instance.
I agree.
Well, we couldn't anyway. We can't file it.
Right, right.
That's right.
So there's, there's a few things like that, that, I mean, I think we don't, I mean, where I was coming from with this memo anyway, is that we're not even there to have to deal with the certified survey map with our negotiations at this point with Dancing Goat. We can't do anything unless we're willing to do this water maintenance plan. Now, if the board is willing to do a detailed water maintenance plan, then we should talk more about how this could possibly work and what kind of counteroffer we would make on the certified survey map in a way that would make sense and could be workable.
But we don't have a certified survey map yet. An updated, we've been asking for one.
Yeah, I mean, this request has been circling for quite some time.
And we're not gonna, we're not gonna pay the cost.
It's not like a certified survey map is all that challenging to call up, ask for, and pay for. These aren't, they're not actual obstacles. So I'm not sure why a 2022 certified survey map of the space couldn't be called for upon by the owners of the property.
That's what we think should happen.
I concur.
Yes.
So I'm at a loss as to why there is no 2022. And I think the easements can be changed after a survey map, but certainly you'd want them in place before so that your carts and horses are in the right order. They're not appearing that way.
So do we have any enforcement mechanism to?
We do not.
Force that?
No. Have there been discussions with the winery as to doing that?
As to cert, just.
Submitting the.
Submitting a certified survey map. That could be our next step, if that's the, if that's what the board would like to do.
I would think the steps have been made already, haven't they, or not?
Yes. We can make the, we can make the formal request.
Okay.
Okay, other questions?
Ted, you had mentioned something that you seemed agreement with a water maintenance plan. So what, what would you like to see in that regard, for that specific point? Me? Yeah, you seemed in agreement. I don't think, yeah, but I don't think, it's hard to tie a water maintenance plan to a separate agreement. Right. They're two separate things. So how would you propose that we, as a board, negotiate that? Is that something that, would it be a separate?
Are you asking?
Would, I'm just kind of, would that be like a, didn't we get a maintenance plan from, we have one?
Yes.
It's just the requirement, actually. You have a water maintenance plan? Follow it. So where, where are we on that part of it? The following of the maintenance plan that we have?
We discussed this at the water and sewer meeting last week. We talked to Todd and Derek about having a logbook, kind of like they're talking about. And we're in the works of making that happen. Kristi, did you say you're gonna help them out with that, get everything documented?
Steve Strauss actually worked on it.
We did.
Vicky's on vacation, so I checked it, I got it, I didn't print it, that's all I did with it so far. But he's made logs for, I believe, daily, monthly, yearly. Then, like you said, I didn't need to look at them thoroughly, but I wrote tomorrow. But it seems like it's a good step that they want to see. I know Mike had asked for that at the last water sewer meeting.
Yeah, so it sounds like our guys are doing the steps. They want proof and have a logbook to prove it, and at the water sewer meetings, they would come and present that, so everyone can see that they're following the plan.
So potentially, we have a way around that particular issue?
This is how I think it should happen, you know, through, through the village authority and, you know, through the village using its best judgment about how it should happen with public input, but not necessarily tied to an agreement where it's a quid pro quo kind of a, kind of a thing. So I think we're on the path toward, toward working this out in terms of that. I just don't recommend that it be a condition.
Question, would that log be something part of the ArcGIS software that we're getting? That would be?
It would be.
So you could download it or whatever?
Right.
It sits up on the cloud.
Sweet. So when you say logbook, you don't mean like a? Well, it'd have to be.
And we have had discussion with staff, not just on the water maintenance, but the equipment. So building into that log, our daily, weekly, monthly, quarterly tasks that need to be done on equipment. So creating a full scope of, for water quality as well as the equipment. And with staff turnover, we haven't gotten as far as we'd like to on that, but working on putting all of that together so that we have.
And along with that, projections of future maintenance, let's say, painting the water tower.
Yes.
That has to be done every so many years.
Exactly, so that would all be in.
Things like that.
That's the plan that you guys approved in August, so that stuff is on paper already. Equipment and the daily, weekly monitoring. So that's what we're referencing, is that plan that you guys approved in August.
Do you want to come up here?
Yeah, and I'm just, because I know it seems like quid pro quo, very strange, but so we met with Matt Dregney in September.
I'm sorry, who are you?
The partners, I'm sorry, my name is Sean Dotson, I'm with the Dancing Goat.
Okay.
Who did you meet with?
Matt Dregney, who's a partner at the Stafford Law Group. And this was after we had trees cleared off our property. And this is stemming back to December thirteenth of twenty-eight. Mary Baling sent an email to Lisa and explicitly advised the village to not proceed with the bike path. She said, "The CSM has to be updated before you guys go start touching people's private property." It was not, and then that's when we engaged with Matt Dregney. Matt explicitly said, "You guys come back to us with a list, what you guys want." And that's what we did. So that's what we provided in October. So this has gone on six months. I know it's crazy that we're talking about water plan and bike path, but, but that's what we were simply reacting to, was Matt Dregney's ask to us. Now, there were four things that we provided to the village. One was on a fence, which you guys helped us on. One was on access issues, which Lisa provided an update on, Joe DeYoung is moving. And there were two other things. One was on the CSM and then the water maintenance plan. All that we're really looking for, again, is visibility, transparency, accountability on the water maintenance plan that you guys have already approved. Mike and I come to these meetings every other week. Again, this plan is already on paper, so when we're talking about, we're working through these steps, it's already been approved. We're just asking for transparency on it. We're not looking for it to be perfect, but just some openness that you guys are gonna manage the system moving forward.
So the conversation that we've just had the last couple of minutes, where we're talking about things not being on paper, we're moving to the cloud. You guys, obviously, you guys have been at these meetings, seen you. So you're also up to date, you know, what the village board has been up to. I think there is a conflict between tying the easements to other issues, though I do understand how that happened, but we're now, we're in, you know, this meeting today.
Yeah.
So I guess, how do you feel about it now?
Not great, because we don't have any update or transparency on it. And frankly, it's seven months after, you know, and even the water meeting that happened two weeks ago, folks were kind of looking at each other like, what is this plan? Even today, saying that we're working through the steps, the steps have already been approved. So that, for us, is a little bit frustrating, a little bit alarming to just get the high-level feel-good that we're making progress. But nobody really understands the plan right now. So that's, I think that's what our issue is. That's the lifeblood of our business. That's why we're so strong on this, and we were simply reacting to an ask from Matt.
And I'm adding a layer to that plan. That plan did cover all of our water sewer equipment. You know, we're looking at putting in writing all of those things. Besides what was, that plan addressed more water quality and certain aspects. We're looking at expanding it and.
Which is great, but yeah, we would just love if you guys were executing on the, on the plan that, again, was board-approved in August. If you guys don't have visibility into that, I would encourage you guys to, that's, that's the village staff. That's, that's the responsibility to manage the system forward. I mean, the media was so bad in the well when it got taken out, that it was toxic, and you guys couldn't get rid of it. So, I mean, I don't know if we're asking for completely unreasonable things, or we're just asking for the system to be managed and for us to have visibility into it.
The other piece, since we're talking about this, the other piece that the Dancing Goat had asked for is to make, for the village to make some pronouncement of its historical failures. And that's another piece of it that I'm not sure what value that brings to the bike path negotiations, and not something that I would ever recommend the village do.
And, yeah, I don't think we're gonna die on that. I think, again, it's just, we're not perfect by any stretch. It's just recognition that there've been stumbles in the past. And if we're painting everything as roses, then our hope that things are gonna be different in the future aren't great.
Well, I think they are different in the future, right now.
I don't, I don't know if we can answer that with confidence.
Well.
Okay, all right. Thank you, thank you. I'm gonna get back, because we're just here to talk about this, this bike path.
Yeah.
That's right. Okay. And thank you for your, your input. We're not really looking for anything tonight. It was just an explanation, and the board members have.
Unless the board did want to, you know, pursue something to oblige the request on the water maintenance plan of Dancing Goat, you know, that would be the board's prerogative. It's not my recommendation that the board do that, but, but I did want to put it to you.
Well, I think that should be done through water and sewer, shouldn't it?
Well, Ted, if.
It should be, and then I want to get MSA involved also.
Yeah.
We gotta get this thing straightened out.
Yeah. Okay, so we're not gonna, we're not gonna tie that in. So we just have the bike path, and it's just where it's at right now, and it stops.
Then no action is needed.
No action is needed.
Do we need to ask you, you had mentioned the formal request for a new CSM. I saw in your memo that the owner of the vineyards offered to pay for, do a resurvey essentially in 2022. Do we, should we request that now, sort of pending the bike path easement being sort of decided upon?
You know.
But formally requesting that, so that can be planned and move forward?
I don't think we can really execute with the winery. We've got a three-party agreement here.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to do that all in one sweep, once we get to the point where we can find some common ground with Dancing Goat. It's a great question, but I think it makes sense to do it all at once. There's just nothing we can formally do now with the CSM to drive this forward.
Okay.
All right, water and sewer, you'll still be taking the lead on this, so, there you go.
Yeah, but I think it's still a separate issue.
Yeah. Yeah, the bike path is totally.
Separate issue.
Yeah, that's, that's not one of them. Okay.
Thank you.
Have to figure out what exactly we have to submit.
All right, any other questions before I move on? All right. Let's move on to item D underneath new business, discussion and possible action regarding possible options to implement subdivision grading requirements, including procedures and enforcement recommendations. including procedures and enforcement, recommendation from the plan commission. How do we want to do this, Lisa, or?
Jane, do you want to go through the memo, then I can talk about what we discussed at the planning commission meeting?
Sure, there had been a lot of discussion about what kind of tools we might have to, to take enforcement over our grading, our master site grading. We already had on the books, the master site grading requirement, but not really a procedure in place to implement it. So we talked about this at plan commission this last week, and, and there was a recommendation, in fact, it passed plan commission to bring it back to the board to consider the possibility that this could be a condition of an occupancy permit. We talked about some of the limitations of that. One of those being, sometimes the occupancy permit comes due in January, when grading can't be done. And so what would we do in those situations where the, it was just not practical to do the grading, but we're ready for occupancy? And so trustee Franklin suggested there could be some sort of conditional, conditional occupancy permit. I think it was, was it six months?
Yeah.
That we would extend it, so that grading could be completed. I just want to, yeah, there were a few things that we talked about at the plan commission that I would like to, you know, to share that, that are in my memo as well. You know, this is always a matter of enforcement discretion, it's always going to be up to the village if they, if they want this to be a priority with the, with the resources. It's certainly an option if, if they want it to be, if you want it to be. One of the limitations that we should make clear is that this is just going to be a point in time when grading requirements are met. It's going to be at that, when that, when that occupancy permit is issued. There's nothing, you know, forward-looking about this that's going to maintain that grading in perpetuity. Also, some of the things that we've seen, if, member, citizens from the village be upset about are actually maybe the result of some private homeowners doing some things within their individual lot. This isn't going to give the village jurisdiction over grading on individual lots. This will apply to a subdivide, or this will apply, you know, to a subdivision at the time, at the time of the master site grading plan is, is completed. And so it's just important to, to keep those limitations in mind. This is, it's a, it's a snapshot in time, and it's a, you know, it's kind of finite in scope of what it, what it will do.
All right, thanks Jane, so we discussed this for a good hour at the planning meeting, and there, there are a lot of valid concerns that I want to bring up. Number one is, this is not, very non-standard for municipality of our size to enforce this. Even our building inspector Scott said he's, he hasn't really seen that at all, for a small village to enforce this, they live it up to as a civil matter. So it's kind of unprecedented what we're doing, but it, I think it is doable. Another concern was the burden on staff, so we don't want this to take up all Lisa's time, all of Kristi's time. You know, we're limited with, with the people we have, so we want to put it on the, on the building inspector, like we said. So, that kind of like Jane said, so we would be kind of relying on the building inspector to enforce this part of issuing occupancy permit. And we would require the builder to submit an as-built survey with the lot elevations. And then, building inspector can verify that with the master site grading plan. If it matches, then they get the occupancy permit, if not, then they don't, they can get a temp up to six months. So that's kind of how we're, we're looking to handle this. Another issue is, we got to find a building inspector who'd be willing to enforce lot grading. So I don't know if we'll put that on the RFP for a new building inspector, we got to find someone who would be willing to do this, because it is very non-standard.
Well, I guess, a lot of it's common sense on the, on the grading plan.
Right.
You want your water to be managed properly, so it doesn't run all over your neighbor's property, et cetera.
I don't think it's, not that much of a burden, they have the survey, they have the master site grading plan, they just, all right, it matches, and they're good, go do an inspection. And another thing is the cost of our administration and the inspections, that's going to be on the builder, so it's not going to fall on the village. Jeff Millsap brought up a, a good point, preemptive measures to keep builders from making this mistake. I was thinking about it, for the site plan, before they get their zoning permit and building permit, they could list the top wall elevation. So, you know, the building inspector, before he gives the permit, he goes, "All right, it's at 880." The house to the left and right's at 880, 881, so that makes sense. You know, if it's 10 feet above, oh, hey, we got to adjust that. So that, that can mitigate the making this mistake in the first place, which was what we're seeing in the vineyard.
Hard shows finished floor elevation.
Exactly, yeah, top of wall.
Top of wall or finished floor elevation.
That's pretty common, so you know this guy's not going to put his foundation five feet, six feet above the neighbors.
Right.
Which would, you know, cause a drainage issue. Another thing we talked about is liability on the village, and Jane had discussed with a competent building inspector, what was it, that we, it shouldn't be an issue for us?
We've got the, this would fall under our qualified immunity.
Right.
Just like so many of our other functions, as long as, as long as our people are doing, you know, a competent job and not, you know, exercising their duty of care, not engaging in negligent behavior, there's, they would enjoy immunity protection. Once they step outside and, and start, start being negligent, or start acting outside the scope of what they're authorized to do, that's where there can be a liability.
So after going through all those concerns, the, the planning commission at Halt thought it was a good idea with, you know, it looks like Cambridge is about to hit a growth spurt with the, this new tid and Scott Farms potentially getting developed here soon, and that's by the, you know, the wetlands. So water mitigation is going to be a factor, and, you know, if we get another builder coming in, would, this would just, you know, keep us covered and make sure they're building the right way. So, yeah, overall, planning commission thought it was a good idea to move forward, but there are some concerns to discuss. It's a very non-standard for us, for a village of our size to do this, but I think it's.
What does this do, Chuck, for us, you know, in finding a building inspector? Are we going to find somebody who is comfortable looking at elevations?
Yeah, I think if we break it down for him, you know, we show him the master set grading plan, and when he shows up for his weekly hour, you know, he could be doing it then, so it's not, you know, too much of an extra burden on him. Kind of simplify the process for him, you know, simpler the better, I, I think, you know, especially with the building inspectors from Safe Built, I think they'd be up to the task, but.
Okay.
It, you know, if we can't, I think we, another way to do this is have our village engineer do it, but that's just more, I think, more of a cost on the village, which can be incurred on the builder.
But you know, when a, when a development is, is laid out, there's usually a civil engineer involved, that he takes all this into consideration. Well, maybe we should put that on his, it should be his responsibility to make sure that those grades are, are followed, et cetera, that, the way that he drew them.
Yeah, I agree. And, you know, we.
And sometimes you see that, too, in developments.
Yeah. Unfortunately, in the vineyards, that's not happening, so it's a way for us to make sure it happens.
But an engineer draws a set of plans, and there's supposed to be ditches in a certain place and stuff like that, and once the development is done, where's that ditch? Well, we just decided not to put it in.
Well, Ted, that would be a civil issue. As it stands right now, that's a civil issue between homeowners, the village isn't involved at all, so.
Yeah, but it should have, it should have been between the homeowners. You know, the plans are submitted to the village, you know, for approval, and, and to keep them, and it should probably carry them in his car. Well, at the end, they couldn't even find them in the village, the civil engineer drawings, or, let's say, Scott Farms. You know, and things were missed. And we had, so we spent a lot of money to, to get everything taken care of. But I didn't bring it back to the village, we took care of it through the association.
Okay. Jane, do you have any comments on, on follow-up to Chuck?
We talked about this a lot at plan commission, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think what else I could share. Do you have any questions for me that I can?
Are you in support of this?
Well, I think it is a policy call, I yield to the board on the policy decisions. It's a, you know, it's, it's, it's a heavy, it will be a heavy lift for, for a village our size. There are, there, you know, there are some practical, here's one thing, just the practical concern, actually, that trustee Franklin had mentioned. Anecdotally, another village similar in size to us did have a hard time finding a building inspector who was willing to, to bite this off. Just because it's not what they're trained to do or, or used to doing, and, and I think a lot of them have plenty of, plenty of work. You know, I think it's a, it's kind of a seller's market right now on that, on that service. So, you know, it could be that we, we could test it out if, in the RFP, if that's a practical concern. We could, we, we did talk about that possibility of doing a couple different RFPs, one with it and one without, or a different rate of pay that we would offer with it versus without that, the ability to do that service, just to see if, if the practical concern with that was, was insurmountable. I just, the, the other thing that we talked quite a bit about is just managing expectations from people. There is, this, this will, this will handle a certain point in time, but we just don't want people to get too excited about what problems this will solve, because there are still a number of problems that we've heard about from people that this won't address at all.
Right.
Can I just say one thing, just so you all know that Vulcan now has two additional leaves. It's Vulcan, White Oak, and Salina. So those are ones that are coming into this area, other than Vulcan, just so you all know that.
Thank you. All right, so Chuck, you're, you're in favor of doing this here. Have, let me ask you this, have you ever seen anybody in, in your construction activities?
No, I'm only building small towns, and none of them have required this level of, this step, this is an electric step.
Does this make us less attractive?
Mark, though, but on set up the plans that are submitted to, let's say, to the state or to the village and stuff like that, I'm going to bring up the first floor level again. And that needs to be maintained, because if it isn't maintained, there's going to be real problems. And I've seen houses that, houses built that they did not follow the finished floor level. The house is all completed, and people have moved in, and, and the inspection department of a certain city decided to come in and raise, they had to raise the floor.
So that is, you know, another limitation.
You know, it's just one of those things that happen.
When people have already moved in, the permit will have been issued here. I mean, this is another consideration, just politically. I mean, the, the consequence of enforcing this is you are telling people they can't move into their house for this reason, and just, you know.
But it's, but it's so simple.
It's a heavy lift.
To make sure that the first floor level is maintained when they put the first floor deck on.
It's not, it's not about how simple it is, Ted, I think the problem is, we're not enforcing it. It doesn't matter, I mean, the right thing is, obviously, the builders should be doing it correctly. They're not doing it correctly, we have no enforcement currently, and so we can't hold them to that, hence why we're in the situation we're in. So we either hold them to it, or we continue not to hold anyone to it, and potentially have the same situation we're having now happen with the next builder, or the next builder, or 10 years from now. And so that's what we're asking here. It's not a, who should do the right thing and not, and do the wrong thing. We all know what the right thing is here. It's just there are builders who choose to do the wrong thing, and we either enforce it, or we don't enforce it.
We don't, but it's also, do we have the infrastructure and the dollars to enforce it? When you get to the county level and you go to court over a number of issues, you have people having their decks ripped off because they didn't meet certain code correctly, and they've reached an, a, and I don't want, that's a level of lift that we're just, that we can't do on the village level. I don't, I don't see us being in a position to kick people out of their houses and, and address building issues six months later.
Rather than, so I, I heard your, Chuck, I think rather than approving this or, or disapproving this, I'd almost say we should pause this, because we have a, a bigger elephant in the room, which is we have no building inspector at the end of this month. And so without a building inspector, we have, we can't do anything, we sort of need to solve that problem first. And I would say instead, we should sort of, I don't know, almost have it as an optional, we want to put on RFPs and say, "We also are considering this, would you consider this as part of it?" And sort of see who bites, because if we get no one, when they say, we say we want to do this, well, we need a building inspector, I'm assuming, because if, I mean, I guess for you, if we don't have one after March 31st, what happens to any future builds? We have to hold them, correct?
Well, there's, yeah.
And if we don't need to go into it, it's just, I mean, that seems like a bigger problem to me than, how do we solve this?
Let us, with our discussion, we will be talking about the building inspector.
I mean, this is a, this is a role that the engineer could play. It's a, it is a, is an expensive one.
But the builder would, would have to pay for it, right, or the developer would have to pay for it if the engineer did it?
If that's what the board decided they wanted, that's definitely what I would recommend, all the administrative, legal, all of those costs should not, they should go on the developer.
Well, usually when you have, when you're building, there's usually a benchmark established somewhere on the stock job slate. And that, that has to be followed, and if they're not following it, it's fairly fast to figure out if they're following it or not.
So.
It's a.
All right, go ahead, Chuck. Or, I'm sorry, what?
That should be requirement of the civil engineering drawings that the village approves.
All right, Wyatt?
You're saying the engineer doing it, or I guess the building inspector and the, the builder having to pay for this. Is it, so all of these costs, just, just to give me clear, because I'm out of, I don't follow this stuff, the building inspector, sort of any work they're doing is already paid for by the builders? Or is it paid by us?
Oh, they pay a fee to the building inspector now, I, we would.
And we would increase that fee if we do grading, but it still doesn't cover their full cost, right? Of, of what we're contracting our building inspector and the, potentially the engineer for this, or how does that work?
Right now, for the permits issued, we pay X percent back to the building inspector. For each of the inspections they do and so forth.
Okay.
I think what you were about to ask Eric was, you, you started saying something before, a discussion that was held at plan commission, if we start increasing all these fees, are we deterring people from building in Cambridge?
Well, I mean, we're deterring people who are going to do a bad job. These aren't hard things, these aren't hard tasks if you come correct to the build. It's not an issue to build something properly.
It, it is, though, if we're paying, they have to pay mileage for the engineer to be coming down, to be doing these inspections and so forth.
Okay.
Potentially, but I think we should still be encouraging quality developers, and I think this could be a way to do that.
But along that, we still have to have certain places, certain, certain things in place.
If the builder does it right, they have to, would have, so we're asking them to produce an as-built with elevations, which is like $500. If they do it right, and everything checks out, that's all they would have to pay extra. And then it shouldn't be, it should take the building inspector or engineer five minutes to verify it. That's a great point, so.
One question, and I don't know if we talked about this at all at plan commission, is this something that is included in a home inspection, the lots?
No.
That's just.
No, it should be part of the, the village building inspector to check this stuff. It's his responsibility to take a look at this.
Well, I, I agree with Wyatt, I think this is a conversation that needs to continue when we have a building inspector.
So one motion could be that the building inspector RFP, but that'll, we'll, we'll hold that to a separate agenda item.
Okay.
But that could be, that could be one way to address that, is to, to at least explore the possibility of an RFP that, that's kind of a two, two-pathway RFP, and then we could put this on an agenda in the future to revisit once we have that settled.
The other thing is, just as a follow-up with this, since we already asked, or since we've already thought about our engineer potentially doing this, if the building inspector doesn't, could we ask MSA how much they would, like, what would be the cost? If they were to do this, I don't know, however much time we would need them to do it, how much would that cost for sort of mileage and the time to do it? I'm just curious, because I think that's going to be sort of a big factor, is even if the cost doesn't ultimately hit our budget, it hits sort of the builders. I think that is sort of potentially a deterrent for builders, regardless of how good the builders are or not. I think, I agree, we want good builders here, but. But we could defer, we could deter all builders from coming if we're going to suddenly sort of increase overall cost by X amount for a whole subdivision or something.
That's a good point.
So I'm curious what MSA's cost would be. We might as well ask that before we make this decision.
I can check the cost. I have talked to Joe a little bit. It is not something they typically do for any communities. So it's not as standard.
That or a surveyor coming in and setting, setting the corners of the house and setting the, putting a stake in there for the elevation of the water floor. You know, yeah, it's the second thing to do, but, you know, a lot of times, when we were building water parks and stuff like that, we brought surveyors in to do just that. To set where the pool's going to be on these huge water parks. You have to have that, just like the huge development. You've got to have somebody.
And that's why I want to put that on.
That has to have that information in the gun and to be able to lay it out.
Would have put that on the builder with the as-built. They produce that for us.
So they would hire their own surveyor to, there's no concern in that?
And then, as-bills are pretty common, but with elevations, that's, that's not, from what I've seen. So that's just one more step. Add the elevation so we can make sure it's graded for the plan.
Well, it'd be nice then that the elevations will make a work on the site so the water doesn't run, still doesn't run towards the basement. And it gets approved with water running towards the basement, so the people move in and they have a four-inch rain and the, their basement gets flooded.
Well, this would be separate from that, because this.
I understand that, but.
This is the subdivision as a whole, not the individual lot.
It's one billable lot and it happens.
But those, yeah, it just, just so we're clear, it's a separate requirement that, that requires the grading go away from an individual house versus this big picture.
Okay. I, I think we're kind of, okay, yeah, I'm just trying to summarize this, because Chuck, I know where you're at. You want to try to, we've got a problem. We want to try to at least make sure we don't see it continue on. All right, this would be a good step. The, where I'm kind of torn is listening to Wyatt in that if we go on out there and we look for a building inspector, we don't know what it's going to cost. If we can't find the one person that would do it, then we have to go to the, our own village engineer. So do we want to table this until after we get our new building inspector?
I think it's a combination of that and the cost from MSA. So I think it's, it's either a new building inspector or engineer, or I guess someone else does it. And so what is roughly the cost? Because right now it's hard to approve anything if we don't know what, what we're essentially going to be increasing total costs.
That's a smart idea.
Question, so if they get their own survey, would they, could they just email out to MSA and, you know, avoid the cost of him driving out and actually inspecting the site for us? They just look at the map and say, looks like it.
That would simplify it. You got a stamped survey, that's not going to, there's no line in the survey.
I agree.
And then they can just look at it, when the building inspector can look at it when he's doing his office hours.
Pass this thing on to somebody else.
Okay, with all that, do you want to make a motion Chuck?
Can we let?
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, thank you.
That was very helpful, thank you.
All right, I'm going to.
So do we need a motion? We're basically just tabling this until we get some more information on costs?
Tabling, I guess, it's, we don't have that information.
We just take no action at this.
Okay. All right, we're going to table it till when?
Well, we're bringing it a little bit up again on section F.
Yeah.
So we can table it till F. Well, that's a little different.
Why?
Because it's Verona.
What, why is it Verona?
Because Apex is in Verona.
But yeah, I know, but that's what I'm saying. There's factors clearly beyond the, the cost of getting a lot of elevations that aren't factors. If we're saying, well, it's Verona, that's implying the inverse, as well, we're Cambridge.
How do you predict the, something that isn't built? How do you predict something that isn't built? How do, how do you say that?
Well, they have a before and after. I just before that, did, did it, did it change anything about the building?
Do it all the time. But how do you, how do you statistically?
Okay, all right, whoa, whoa, whoa. Okay, I'm going to hold off here. Let's, let's, when do we want to have this information back? Because I don't want this to continue on. What's a reasonable timeframe to get this out?
Well, we will be coming up to the RFP on the agenda, so we'll talk about that.
Twenty minutes? Twenty minutes?
I can live with 20 minutes, sure. You know, all right, let's, let's table it for 20 minutes. We're going to come back on it, it's item F.
We're not tabling, we're just not taking any action right now.
Okay, all right. Okay, so let's move on then to our Smart Growth Plan and the Plan Commission. Who wants to talk on that? You Chuck or Lisa?
Lisa?
Plan Commission did discuss.
Lisa, go ahead.
Plan, Plan Commission discussed the need to update our Smart Growth Plan that was obvious in our full solar panel discussion. Mark Roffers had done a lot of work for us in the solar discussions. A lot of the topics that would be discussed in a Smart Growth update. I did reach out to him. He would be interested in helping us update our Smart Growth Plan. He had a couple of questions that he raised. How in-depth we'd want to be would kind of depend on what the range of cost would be. If we are doing a lot of citizen input, or if we're just taking factual stuff updating. So he did say he is interested. A lot of the groundwork has been done already. He, I did forward it to you today, Eric, and to Mark, his response. You're looking at, when we want to do it, he is busy right now. He wouldn't be able to until July, August. We did not budget for that, doing that this year. So we could look if there was a way to do it later this year, or if we'd want to look to do it in 2023. You know, starting there, budget it, so.
There was discussion, since the solar is going in, do we really want to do it right now? Not knowing what's going to happen, just wait and see?
Well, I think we, we need to upgrade it, I know, update it. I know, the town of Christiana is also upgrading their Smart Growth at the same time.
We have to.
But do we, we have to do it, but do we want to wait until we have a decision on the solar? So we know exactly what we're dealing with.
Did he, when talking to Roffers, did they say, I'm just curious, like, if we were to wait, how much of the work that they just do sort of is negated by the next eight months to a year potentially? I'm just curious, like, how much of that is, like, if we were to wait versus starting to contract with them now?
I actually don't.
Because obviously, we put in X amount of dollars into it already.
Yeah.
I'm assuming it's not too much loss, but how much is going to change in the next eight to 12 months? But it's still a good question, I think I'd want to know.
Yeah, I think, I think the key point is to know if the solar is going in or not is going to affect that part of the Smart Growth expanding that way.
Well, the solar could really, really be a problem for our Smart Growth.
Yeah. So he is interested. We have to provide him a little more information, exactly how in-depth, what we're looking for, and he can provide us a quote.
How long will it take you to get the additional information?
It should be long. So he said, are we looking at a one-page with a dollar amount in scope outline? Or a full proposal with detailed work program? So if we want to take a look, I forwarded it to, to Mark and Eric today. And see.
So it's the, what is the motion? Just to, to continue to engage with Roffers for, to them to lay out what the options are? Because we have nothing to approve today, right?
No, no.
There was an alternative, and that's to actually go out for an RFP and try to find somebody. But he's already done most of the work. So that's why the motion was to engage him specifically rather than.
Which was part of the reason why we worked with Roffers in the first place, was this assumption that we would take any work they did and apply it to a Smart Growth Plan update, that we would have to do anyways.
So really, we're just asking for a blessing that we go with him, instead of going out for a full RFP.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I think we should use him.
Jane did verify that we wouldn't need to go out for a full RFP, because he has done a lot of this work already. It would be expanding upon that.
Professional services, yeah.
It's already done.
Judgment.
Do you recall how much we had to pay the last time we did this?
I want to say the full Smart Growth Plan was about 20 to 25,000 the first time.
Was that was how many years ago?
20 years ago. That was with full questionnaires to all citizens and so forth, where we wouldn't need to go to that extent this time and so forth.
So if it was 25,000 20 years ago?
So it's 100,000.
Well, it's at least double that.
That was starting from scratch. That was starting from scratch, though. Smart Growth's were new at that.
Well, I don't know if there's anything to be, we're not harmed by just getting a one-page proposal from the guy to say, all right, here's where I was at, here's what I think it would take to, to get it all updated. The only issue. Yeah, that, that part is easy, but then it's a matter of just how, if the solar farm, you know, that gets fit in, because you're going to have to dovetail that.
We keep questioning to him, is it worthwhile to wait until we have the outcome of the PSC decision?
Or is it not? Is it in our benefit to have a plan in place now if it does not get approved as is? Because they are now considering growth plan as part of your requirements, you know. So do we do it now? And this is what our plan is, so stay out of that area, kind of thing?
Well, and, and there are people in Christiana taking a look at that right now. They're looking at their, their plans for the future, their previous plans for the future, also Cambridge's plans for the future. And this may end up, it may end up going to court. It probably is going to court, because the, the utilities are not taking a look at, at, at the plans of municipalities when they, when they're citing the solar panels right now.
So I just threw that wrench in there, but he isn't available, so that's a problem. We'd have to, that wrench I just threw in there, he's not available until end of these years.
That's right, oh, okay.
It kind of negates that, but at the same time, it's, well, we still have the authority. If we want to go out for an RFP, you could. You could go find somebody that would do it right now, if that, if you guys feel that that's important. But we spent a lot of money.
Yeah, we already did spend 25, 30 on it already anyways. I think, I think we just continue to pursue with him. And then the question, the two questions are, what is the cost of the proposal? And then if we were to wait to next year, how much is lost essentially by waiting potentially from his work that's already done?
I don't think it hurts us to get a proposal from the guy, one page, he doesn't have to, to go through it. And then we can look at it and kind of decide from there.
Do you think we can have it on the next agenda?
Yeah.
I think that's too soon, or is that good? Okay.
And if you guys want to just review what I, what he sent to me today and can just post some questions to him.
All right, okay. Thank you. Now, it's been exactly 19 minutes and 20 seconds, and I'm going to just, yes, I'm going to slide back in. Discussion and possible resignation of building inspector and RFP for services. Where do we want to start on this one?
In your packet is a notice from Scott Jelli. Terminate contract with the village effective the end of this month. I have reached out to Safe Belt to see, I have not heard back from him yet if they'd be willing to fill in as we go through the RFP process. So I'm waiting to hear back from him on that, but.
Who's Safe Belt?
They are the building inspector in Deerfield.
Okay.
Yeah, I've, I've worked with them for about two years. Chris Buchke is the head inspector, and he is very, very, very thorough. He's very tough. So I think you'd be perfect for Cambridge with everything going on. So I would, I would highly recommend we try and get him, I guess we'll see what he says. I know they're very busy, but you'd be a good fit.
I guess.
I think we should be able to, I think we should be able to talk to somebody in their office. It's a, it's a fairly large office, isn't it, that they work on? Somebody should return our calls when they make a phone call.
I just put a call in today, so. I will, I guess this is question two, if they were to say, yeah, we can step in. Is this one of those where we wouldn't need an RFP or would we?
This is in the category, I think, of professional services. I want to just check and make sure that's true. A building inspector, I think, maybe could go either way. I, I'm inclined to say that we could do this without an RFP and without, but it.
I just asked for their billing rates, Lisa, so we can, we have some idea.
Just out of curiosity, would they be able to look at the grading? Is that something they typically do?
Knowing Chris, I think he could handle it. And I think he'd do a very good job, since he's extremely thorough, very good at his job. So I think he would be the perfect guy for it.
Kind of an odd question, but would he advise on what he would need to see? Like, I would want, if I'm going to do this for you, I'd want to see, give me those maps.
I've spoken to him about all the stuff going on here, and he's advised me, and yeah, I think that's a good idea. I don't want to get into that right now, but I think that's a good idea. We can get Chris, kind of inquire him about how to handle this properly. Because he would, he would know.
Okay, so you're saying that we could get this and we don't have to go out for a proposal?
I, I'm pretty sure we don't have, that this could fit in that bucket where we don't have to go out for an RFP.
So question though, just in case, I mean, as a backfill, because, or if, if he says no, or they don't have the time. Two questions for you, Jane and Lisa, I guess, is one, what happens on March 30th, on April 1st? When we don't have a building inspector anymore? What is, what, what essentially is the next, like, what happens at that point?
If we, if he would say no, I'd reach out to some other building inspectors in the area.
Yep. But I'm just curious, if we have no one by April 1st, because whatever, who knows?
I did talk to Scott today. He did say a majority of the building permits that are out right now should be finished by the end of this month. He doesn't see a whole lot outstanding. There'll be a couple, but most will be finished.
And what, but what happens to ones that are outstanding? Nothing? They just sit essentially until we have someone?
I think we'll try to find somebody as soon as.
We will find.
Okay, all right.
I think that's right.
State statute does allow that. Neighboring municipalities can help out in this situation.
The second thing was, I, I mean, I don't see any reason why we shouldn't potentially at least approve a motion for an RFP in the case that Safe Belt says no, we still will have to do an RFP. So we might as well approve what we want in our RFP language now, so that we don't have to wait until April anyways, because that's when our next meeting is.
If we want to know especially what different, what the breakdown in cost would be to add this grading requirement, that might be useful information for.
I mean, we should obviously ask, we should ask Safe Belt too, what would they?
And I believe, I believe Safe Belt does build differently. I believe they build on travel time, on travel and hourly. Whereas we currently are, they receive 80% of the building permit costs. So they're, you know, different.
Well, somehow it's going to get paid for, so.
Okay, so we know we want to send this out to Safe Belt. Is there anybody else that we're going to then do this with?
Well, right now, the question I pose to them is, would you be willing to help us out come April 1st? Until we decide. If it's decided we don't need an RFP, it could be a question. If it's decided we don't need an RFP, it could be a question, would you be willing to take the village on as a?
Go forward and take over Cambridge's inspections.
I'm comfortable saying we, this is, this falls, we can go without an RFP if we want to. I just, yeah, I was operating under the premise that we would want to regardless of whether we have the stopgap, but maybe that wasn't true.
Okay.
So when we go, when we talk to Safe Belt, are we gonna ask them about the, you can ask them about lock rating costs?
What he would need to see?
Yeah.
Although, you know, if the conversation is just for a stopgap, maybe we're not gonna have any subdivisions that's gonna come up with until we can get an RFP.
Gotcha. Okay.
But if it is as a permanent contract, then we could discuss that. If that's something they'd be open to.
And then kind of tailor our procedures to what they think works the best?
Do we need a motion then tonight to move ahead and pursue it with Safe Belt?
Like Wyatt said, one, a motion if we need a stopgap measure in, or if.
Should we do an RFP? I think we need some direction. Should we do an RFP regardless of what they say about the stopgap?
Yeah, but.
But I thought you said that we didn't need to do an RFP. No, we don't need to, but should, do we want to?
Well, and if they say, no, we can't take you on, then we'd want to get moving on an RFP sooner rather than later, not waiting until April.
Do we want the chance to look at costs regardless, you know, and compare costs?
Do we have a Plan A? No, if Plan A doesn't work, we need to vote on a contingency Plan B.
All right, I'll make a motion in the event Safe Belt does not work out, put out an RFP for building inspector. And we include costs for lock rating and, yeah.
And preferential treatment if they do add, if they are willing to do the lock rating.
Kind of like that too, Chair, that Blake talked about. Is that what you're talking about?
Yes. Yep, exactly.
I will second that.
All right. Further discussion? You're all right with this, Jane? You got it? Okay.
One question, do we need a second motion? The precursor to that, which is to move forward with Safe Belt?
That was part of the.
Or do we just sort of make that decision? We've just made that decision. Okay, just want to make sure.
Let's get them on board.
All right, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please, if anybody sing aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, that's what we're gonna do.
One last question before we move on from this topic. Just because there is still a week and some change or less on Scott and his time, not to stir up the grading again, but will, if we were to say tonight, we wanted to move forward with the policy change for grading and have Scott do it, is, have we asked him? Would he essentially say, no, he's not going to?
Scott is not qualified to do it.
Okay, all right. So there is, so it essentially, got it. Okay, so we really can't make a decision that without having our, knowing what our engineer would cost anyways.
And like Chuck said, most building inspectors for villages our size don't.
Yep, okay. That's what I wanted to just check on. It's not that, I didn't want to have a lost opportunity there for the last, whatever number of permits he may issue in the next week essentially or weekend.
And there isn't anything further to do with Scott. We see his letter of resignation, we accept it, wish him the best of luck. Okay, all right.
Good.
Okay, let's move on. Discussion and possible action to allow ATVs, UTV operation on designated village roads. What that was Dean, and he is not here, but I don't know, where, was this, did this come through you, Eric?
No, Dean did bring it before us at the last meeting. He presented this. A number of municipalities have done it around us recently. Question was, do we want to look into this, explore it further?
I have to agree with Jay when he was here earlier. You can't read this.
I can't, I couldn't.
Yeah, I see what section this.
Yeah, that's what just Dean had submitted when he came to the meeting last week.
I have copies here if you, well, copy here.
I had looked it up online. It was, it was interesting. And I looked at a number of municipalities that had positive and.
Okay, a number of municipalities, what municipalities have approved it?
Well, it was interesting because they didn't, they approved routes, which means they had to have signage for those routes. They also had an infrastructure of police services that had to be increased when it started because there was some education. There's a situation where if you take an ATV home after being drunk, that's a completely different issue than if you drive a car home drunk. So they had the communities, while they overwhelmingly supported because they were an ATV community, also did address a number of municipal issues that came up that needed to, so it was public education. Not every road was going to be an ATV road. They had to be marked and then that had to be policed.
Well, and of the, I mean, the three, there's three municipalities in here that are included, Oakland, Christiana, and Waterloo.
These are outside of that. So these are communities up north in Wisconsin, so they're ATV communities.
Got it.
And so when you put an ordinance for an ATV community to have ATVs, it's an overwhelming success.
Yeah.
That's part of their tourism income, which isn't necessarily the Cambridge issue. But so now you have a community that's in full support of ATVs and these were the problems that they had.
Yeah.
So Cambridge just needs to be aware that a community that is supportive of this will also have those issues that need to be addressed.
Yeah, you're not gonna run them down the park trails and stuff like that.
Park trails was an issue of ATVs on, like going through, you know, West Side Park when it's muddy. And so they had their own West Side Park, obviously, and their own boardwalk that had, you know, just, they had a number of people drunk, taking ATVs home to avoid DUIs. They had kids who were not properly restrained. They had helmets, so they.
Pedestrians get killed by them.
Well, I don't know that they mentioned that specifically, but they did say that, you know, you have to be aware that if you bring this into your community, even full support, that you will have to also increase policing for a bit until education meets, you know, the expectation of the drivers. And of course, it's not every ATV driver, and I don't want to like put a blanket statement about anybody who takes up an ATV. I just am saying, since we're talking about discussion and we're in a discussion mode, that there are financial issues to the village if we take this up, considerations. Yeah. And I'm not putting a value on ATVs or their, you know, like.
They need to be, so that you can drive them down the road. They have to have turn signals and certain other things, I would think.
They do, they have to be roadworthy, but you also have to make sure that there's somebody making sure that those vehicles are roadworthy. And so there's this, there's position of education that needs to go through and we just need to be aware of that.
They are licensed too. You have to license in order to do that. It has to be licensed in the state of Wisconsin to do that, and I believe it has to be insured too.
It does need to be insured. It's interesting that some insurance agent brought it here.
Struggling business.
That's as good as a drunk driving ticket as well as your driver's license, not just a ticket. It is, it goes against your driver's license. So I'm assuming.
It does not go against your driver's license if you take an ATV out.
It should.
It should.
It should.
Get a ticket.
So.
It's a completely different license and so it doesn't take points off your, so that, again, is some education. I know, that has to be put into place.
That's why they're doing that pass by house on that way.
Yeah.
So Dean brought this up, or brought this to the board. It sounds like none of us are necessarily in agreement of this without sort of hearing more from Dean or other members of the public why they want this. So I think we just sort of say, we're not gonna take no action right now. I don't see any reason for talking about it until Dean or someone else comes up and says, I want to drive my ATV on the roads around here. And explain to me why, because I don't really see any value of having it right now either.
Well, it's, yeah, it's a question of value and it makes a lot of sense if you have dollars coming to your community to drive ATVs. Obvious, like you need those dollars, you want those dollars. And so you're willing, there's trade-offs. Everything is trade-off. And I agree, I need to hear the trade-off because I definitely see.
There's always negatives with passing.
Right, so I think we just need to be aware of the scope of what we're agreeing to.
All right, I'm gonna suggest this gets, if, you know, consideration at least, go to a committee, subcommittee. I just don't know which one.
It would be Public Works.
Okay.
Yeah, they would need to set up the signage, they would need to designate the road, they would need to work with DOT, and we potentially should also bring in some public safety to get their input about how they would police individuals in this community if we.
State statute.
I think before we push it back to Public Works, I'd rather have Dean or someone else come back to the board and explain why they even want this in the first place versus the, what was submitted here, which seems like three communities who did this and some unreadable info in the packet at least. I know that there's, there is an actual readable thing of some legal opinion on this whole thing. So rather than push it off, I think that's the right place to push it. Once we sort of generally agree, maybe we do want to pursue something, but I don't know if anyone, I don't want to pursue anything right now.
I would agree.
So I'd rather hear at the board level why people want this before it sort of goes to a committee first.
Well, they're fun.
Well, I know that they're fun. But like, to your point, who is, where is this, what tourism is being driven here? Who's like proposing they want to suddenly do a bunch of projects around this, so.
Tourism is another thing.
Yeah. But like, who is asking for this? Dean is.
I mean, I guess that there's potential there.
I'm not an ATV person, so.
You know, I actually, yeah, I've had them and.
You have a dune buggy.
No, I've had.
I know, but you also currently.
And it's roadworthy and everything else, but the ATVs.
I don't know about that, Mark. We should, we need to.
Whoa.
I need to deny this for Mark's dune buggy.
Just leave me and my little dune buggy alone. All right, that's got nothing to do with ATVs. We're gonna table this one right now. I'm getting out of here with this issue. So let's table it.
I don't consider that an ATV.
I don't either. Okay, I'm with you. But.
It's too wide for your information. It's too wide per the, I read that, and there's size limits and how many wheels it has to have.
Okay, all right.
Definitely looking at law enforcement and how, what, what they're any.
Let, I'm gonna go with you on this one, Wyatt. Let's, because we need to hear more why we would do this and hit the bigger issues. I had never even thought about the drunk driving.
I didn't know about it until I started doing it.
Is this opening up a little bit more? Maybe snowmobiles have to be added to this too. You can add wheels to the front end of the snowmobile and run those down the road.
Okay, I don't know if we have a big, big cry for those right now, but let.
We had Snowmobile Club approach us a couple of years ago and it was, the state did not approve because they wanted to go down 1218.
Yeah, okay, all right, all right, okay. Let's, let's just invite Dean in and he can, he can pitch this idea.
Well, you know what, I think you were right to bring it to a subcommittee to have citizen feedback.
I think there should be citizen feedback on it. I mean, where's the community want to do it?
It's gonna take a champion. I'm not even sure we've got one on our own board, to be honest. And I had them. But I have to admit, I had never thought about drunk driving. Of course, if my boys were, at that time, if they had alcohol, there would have been.
Well, I, that's a, that's an issue on.
Well, and you gotta have a certain age and they.
Snowmobiles are the same way.
No, they've got to have, you gotta go through training, you're right about the licenses, and then they've got to have the helmets. And there's a bunch of requirements. And even the size, a gile can't be running around on an 850. There was like a.
I think it's an age limit. I believe it's an age.
It's an age, but the engine size too.
Yeah.
They talk, yeah, about how many CCs the engine is, so you'd have to.
There's a lot of rules. You'd have to, you'd have to solve it like a colony. They would have more information on that, but.
I think it should go back to a committee, but I'm also interested in exactly why Cambridge should do this. And then if it comes up and we talk about it with Dean, here's the benefits, then we can really kind of bore into it at a committee level.
You don't think there's kind of a, well, maybe not, never mind.
All right, so that's my.
Yeah, noise is another one.
I'm fine either way. I mean, I don't think we have a Public Works meeting coming up right now planned, right? Or topics for one? I don't think so.
All right.
I don't think so.
I don't remember. Yeah, so I mean, if he wants to bring up the next village board, this can be faster anyways. And if he wants to come back and then we can decide from there where to go, so.
Okay, let's do that then.
Don't they not bring it to a planning meeting?
Gonna bring Dean back and then just let Dean tell us what he is thinking of, what the benefits are, and if it looks like it's something that, okay, we could, we want to learn more, then it can go back. Then they can certainly.
Well, I think we're looking at trade-offs. We know, we know what we have to overcome financially with public, or public safety, public education, and then we need to know what the trade-off is. If the trade-off is, it's super fun to drive down the road, it's super fun to put a horse on the road, it's super fun to do a lot of things. Totally agree, really fun. But the trade-off for this financial burden is this financial gain. So I want to make clear that as much as I would love to have a group of citizens tell me how amazing their ATV experience is, I want to know what the financial trade-off that can be available to the village to make this worthwhile.
Yep, agree.
Not that it's awesome.
Yes. Okay. We're good?
We're good.
All right. Mark's dune buggy is out of this conversation.
I just, I know this is gonna hit the paper, because you'd be very.
Oh, no.
I'm close.
No, 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 no. This doesn't.
I don't want, I don't want the ATV community coming down.
Yeah, yeah, I forget.
I just, I understand it's fun.
I didn't even see Karen back there. Karen, you, all right.
She's on the TV.
I know.
All right. Okay, are we all right with that? Okay.
Sure.
But out of context, if you watch the whole YouTube video.
Yeah, right.
All right.
I'm gonna have to explain myself.
Yeah, very fun.
Okay, let's move on to correspondence. It's Municipal Treasurer's Week proclamation. I don't want to read all of this, but you know what? Do you all have a copy of it here?
I don't.
I'll tell you what, I'll read the first paragraph, I'll just spin it down.
Oh, yeah, go the other way first.
Okay. Whereas the Office of the Municipal Treasurer is a time-honored and vital part of local government that impacts the day-to-day life of folks throughout our state and.
Whereas municipal treasurers provide the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels and.
Whereas municipal treasurers administer the procedures and keep their financial records and allow governing bodies to carry out public functions efficiently and with confidence and.
How far are we?
Fourth paragraph.
Three, four.
Four. Whereas.
One, two, three. Which one here?
Yep.
Whereas municipal, oh no, next one, Wisconsin's. Whereas Wisconsin's 1.853 municipal treasurer and 72 county treasurers work together to collect all property taxes for their own municipalities and counties as well as their local schools, technical colleges, and the state and.
Whereas municipal treasurers continually strive to improve the administration of their[1649.83] responsibilities through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and conferences across Wisconsin and...
And whereas this week, the state of Wisconsin joins all Wisconsinites in appreciating and thanking our municipal treasurers for the important work they do for communities throughout our state.
Sure, but I'm not Tony Evers. So now therefore, I, Tony Evers, governor of the state of Wisconsin, do hereby proclaim April seventeenth to twenty-third, 2022, as Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week throughout the state of Wisconsin, and I commend this observance to all of our state residents.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Glad to provide the recognition.
Thanks, Chrissy.
Thank you, Chrissy.
All right, we've got some upcoming meetings. April fifth is election, so be ready for that. April eleventh, plan commission. The twelfth is joint law enforcement. We've got a village board meeting on the twelfth as well. Library board is thirteenth. April nineteenth, water and sewer, and April twenty-sixth, another village board meeting.
And I will clarify, the current board is still in effect at the April twelfth meeting. The April twenty-sixth meeting is when the new board is sworn in and takes...
Okay.
It is.
Is this your last meeting, Carla?
It is.
Okay.
I see people clapping.
No, I know that, but I couldn't, I wasn't sure if that was like preemptive, and you were gonna be at the twelfth one, or if you weren't gonna be at the...
No, I'm, I'm...
You moved.
I'm moving.
Yeah. We knew that, so.
Right.
Okay, now, questions, referrals to staff for future agenda items?
Yeah, I have one.
Go ahead.
I'd like to take a look at Chris Bruning's property and his proposal and make sure everything is in order when we do transfer the sale.
Okay, all right.
There, we'll tie to that at the next plan commission meeting. I'm preparing the notice for rezoning because it is currently a public property, so it would be rezoned to conservation.
Okay, but we still would like to take a look at it.
But Chair, you're requesting to add conditions in addition to what was...
Lisa just informed me on something there, but, you know, I don't know if we ever saw a certified survey map of this property, and I would like to see that, how it ties into the rest of the people's property. You know, because it is quite a large piece of property. I, I consider two acres, not just a little parcel, so.
So what we could do is put it on the, the next agenda, and if you want to reconsider any of the previous actions that the board took, you can make a motion to reconsider